Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, January 23, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mr. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is a Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. The next order of business is proclamations. I believe we have Councilwoman Warwick to present one.
Okay. Hello. Thank you, everyone, for coming. So today, we are doing a proclamation in honor of Maternal Health Awareness Day. So I just, just to say a few quick words. So when I first started running for office, a very good friend, childhood friend of mine, Elise Springer, who lives in Los Angeles and is a therapist, you know, is a therapist specializing in maternal health, postpartum depression and things like that, immediately said to me, yeah, one of the first things you gotta do is something around maternal, maternal health. So that, that's where this sort of spark came from. And then, of course, coming here, getting to know Representative Mays and all the wonderful work that you all are doing. So that was the inspiration for, for doing this proclamation. I do want to mention the organizations here before I start. We have representatives from the Midwife Center, Jeremiah's Place, Healthy Start, The Birthing Hut, of course, Representative Mays, our PA rep from the 24th District. And I also want to mention just some other organizations that are very active in this, in this area, do lots of wonderful work around Pittsburgh and also nationally. There's Brown Mamas, Elephant Song Dula Services, Hello Neighbor, Kangaroo Birthing, the Maya Organization, New Voices for Reproductive Justice, Black Mamas Matter Alliance, Black Women's Health Imperative, and the National Healthy Start Association. So just thank you to all of those organizations. So we will get to it. We'll start with the proclamation and then we'll have a few words from our guests. Okay. Whereas, the health of pregnant and postpartum individuals is integral to maintain the overall health and well-being of all members of a community. And whereas, according to the CDC, the United States leads in having the highest maternal mortality rate among similar countries and has seen an increase in maternal mortality over the last few decades. And whereas Pennsylvania ranks 26th in the United States for maternal mortality, according to the Pennsylvania Maternal Mortality Review Committee. And whereas, in December 2016, the city of Pittsburgh created the Gender Equity Commission, responsible for identifying discrimination against all women and girls. And whereas, according to Pittsburgh's Gender Equity Commission, Black, Asian, multiracial, and Latinx women in Pittsburgh experience higher rates of maternal mortality, maternal mental health issues, and maternal morbidities. And whereas, according to the Gender Equity Commission, maternal mortality among Black women in Pittsburgh is higher than 97% of similar cities in the United States. And whereas, these disparities are recognized to be a result of institutional racism that impacts the care that mothers in Black, Asian, multiracial, and Latinx communities experience. And whereas Pittsburgh organizations such as Healthy Start, Inc., Jeremiah's Place, the Midwife Center for Birthing and Women's Health, The Birthing Hut, Jewish Healthcare Foundation, and many more are working locally to promote maternal wellness in a variety of ways. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh is dedicated to being a livable city for all, which includes creating a prosperous environment for mothers both during pregnancy and in the postpartum phase. And whereas, maternal health awareness day has been recognized by state advocacy and community-based organizations every year on January 23 to raise awareness about maternal health in the United States, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize January 23, 2024, as Maternal Health Awareness Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Will we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The proclamation has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And I also want to thank my other, the Women's Caucus, you know, lots of great work is being done here on council around childcare, domestic violence protections, our foster care services, et cetera. So a shout out there as well. And not just women, also our honorary Women's Caucus. So at any rate, yeah. So let's see. Tammy, would you like to come up first? You're good. Well, why don't you at least come up and introduce yourself? And that way, yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm Tammy Opelley, Executive Director of Jeremiah's Place. We're Pittsburgh's only crisis nursery, actually only crisis nursery in the region. And we're very pleased to be part, part of this and recognize the, the extreme care needed for maternal health and mental health awareness in, in the region. So we thank you for this.
Good morning. I am Jada Shirel. I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Healthy Start. Healthy Start is a nonprofit organization that takes a public health, community-based approach to eradicating the disparities that our Black women and babies face, our Black women birthing people and babies face. I am so excited that the city is recognizing Black maternal health day. I'm getting, you know, Black Maternal Health Week is coming up in April. I'm already thinking ahead. Shout out to that occasion. But we all need to be concerned with protecting our women, our babies, our birthing people. The, the fate and plight of our babies, our youth and our most vulnerable is an indicator of us as a people. It's an indicator of our hearts, of our policies. And so I'm excited that we are increasing awareness around maternal health. I'm excited to see the action that we will put behind this proclamation at the city level, at the county level, at the neighborhood level, and at the individual level. So again, thank you. And thanks for, for recognizing this day.
Hello. My name is Ayanna Bridges. I am the owner and founder of The Birthing Hut. The Birthing Hut is a community organization which strives to center Black women in a pregnancy. We provide prenatal pregnancy care and postpartum care through our doula agency, as well as community engagement and events that we throw for our doulas and our mothers. The Birthing Hut is also the first training and certifying agency in Pittsburgh with our own developed curriculum to train and certify doulas and birth workers and PA. Thank you for honoring The Birthing Hut and recognizing the work that we are doing. And we strive to continue to partner and collaborate with other birthing organizations to make sure we are actively decreasing maternal infant mortality, as well as creating effective and tangible change within the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's so great to be here in City Council as we approach a new time in this region with new leaders and leaders who are coming with a renewed vision. Definitely want to honor our new City Council President, Councilmember Lavelle. He and I, for many years, had a chance to work together. And I'm honored to now do that as State Representative. We come down here every year to honor Women of Color Hurstry Moms. And it's great to be down here honoring more of the important issues and intersectional issues that are impacting this region. So Maternal Health Awareness Day is being honored here in the city of Pittsburgh, but also in Harrisburg. As, as you may or may not know, I am State Representative Latasha DiMays. I represent the 24th Legislative District. I am embarking on my second year of my first term and honored to do so. So one of the issues that has emerged for me is as a continuation of the work that I have done for reproductive justice, having led New Voices for Reproductive Justice for almost two decades, this is an extension of that work. My being a state legislator and a policy advocate now as a state legislator is a continuation of our movement building for reproductive justice. So to have Maternal Health Awareness Day recognized in the city of Pittsburgh is an important step. Just like we talked about the Gender Equity Commission, I was able to connect with that work as well. And to work with so many of these organizations that are standing here today, there is, you know, sometimes we have a tendency to look at things that are trendy. But the health of mothers, the health of babies, the health, health of Black mothers in particular is not trendy, trendy. It is a public health crisis that we are facing. And so that we must not only, you know, deliver on proclamations and deliver on policy, we must make culture-shifting, monumental changes so that we can save moms and so that we can save babies. And if we're not willing to put investments into maternal health, not only at the city and the county level, but at the state level, then it is all just lip service. So I'm proud to say that in the state budget last year, for the first time, our Governor Shapiro allocated $2.3 million for Black maternal health in particular, and is looking to make a larger investment in maternal health for all moms this coming budget. And so it's going to take us all at each level to be able to turn it around because for Black moms in particular, 90, 92% of maternal deaths among Black mothers are preventable. That means it doesn't have to happen. So we have to have the will as the city council, as the county council, all of our executives and our body and the General Assembly to make sure that we protect Black moms, that Black baby, that, that we protect all, excuse me, all moms and all babies. And look at the ways that racism, look at the ways that patriarchy, look at the ways that capitalism actually impact the outcomes for Black moms and babies in particular. So I want to thank the council member Warwick for having the understanding and the foresight to put forth this proclamation. And I can't wait to work with all of you for the important policy work, but budgetary work and culture change work that we'll do together. Thank you so much. And happy Maternal Health Awareness Day.
How about right here?
Copies of the proclamation, if everyone can.
All right. And I believe we have two proclamations to be read into the record, one from Councilwoman Strasburger and one from Councilwoman Warwick. This is one.
Yeah, just one proclamation to will of council.
Ah, okay. Stras, oh, sorry.
Councilmembers Strasburger and Warwick present. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, January 27, 2024, to be Avi Baron Monroe Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Will we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations are approved. Next up is the will of council, first beginning with Councilwoman Coghill and Councilwoman Smith.
Councilmembers Coghill and Smith present. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls on the Allegheny County Department of Human Services and County Executive Sarah Inomorato to use Controller O'Connor's forthcoming audit to guide the funding of all the recommendations provided by City Council's unhoused committee.
And can we, Councilwoman Warwick's?
Councilwoman Warwick presents. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh urges both the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the U.S. Congress to pass pending legislation regarding the safeguarding and improvement of maternal health care and standards in Pennsylvania and in the United States. And whereas, according to the Centers of Disease Control, the United States has the highest maternity mortality rate of any high-income country and significant disparities in maternal mortality and morbidities among age groups, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic groups. And whereas, according to the Pennsylvania Maternal Mortality Review Committee, Pennsylvania ranks 26th in the country for maternal mortality rates. And whereas, the pregnancy-associated mortality rate is 82 per 100,000 live births for all pregnant women and birthing people. The rate for Black women and birthing people is 163 per 100,000 live births, making them twice as likely to die from pregnancy-related complication in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, in May 2023, Senator Cory Booker and U.S. Representatives Lauren Underwood and Alma Adams reintroduced the Black Maternal Health Momnibus Act, comprised of 13 individual bills aimed at safeguarding and improving maternal health outcomes in the United States. And whereas, in October 2023, Pennsylvania State Representative Latasha Mays, with State Representatives Morgan Cephas and Gina Curry, launched the Pennsylvania Black Maternal Health Caucus. And whereas, Governor Shapiro signed Act 5, introduced as HB 1362 in the House by Representative Morgan Cephas, and ultimately introduced by Senator Judy Schwank, and passed as SB 262 in the Senate, into law to mandate reporting on severe maternal morbidity through the Department of Health. And whereas, the Pennsylvania Black Maternal Health Caucus seeks to address the disturbing trends of Black maternal mortality and morbidity and passed the Pennsylvania Momnibus Legislative Package modeled after the Federal Momnibus Act. And whereas, Pittsburgh's Gender Equity Commission found that Black, Asian, multiracial, and Latinx mothers in Pittsburgh experience higher rates of maternal mortality, maternal morbidities, and disparities in maternal health care compared to their white counterparts. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh is dedicated to being a livable city for all, which includes access and equality to quality maternal health care. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and United States of America share the goal of protecting the mental and physical health of pregnant and postpartum individuals. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges Pennsylvania General Assembly and the U.S. Congress to pass any pending legislation regarding the safeguarding and improvement of mental health, mental health care and standards in Pennsylvania and in the United States. And be it further resolved that a copy of this will of council will be distributed to the Allegheny County delegations of the Pennsylvania State General Assembly and the United States Congress.
Thank you. Will we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both will of councils have been approved. That takes us on to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or liberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. After your calls, please state your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Christopher Beam.
Esteemed members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Christopher Beam. I live in Bloomfield. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Pro Housing Pittsburgh, a grassroots organization of Pittsburgh renters and homeowners who advocate for abundant, affordable housing throughout the Pittsburgh region. Just over two months ago, I stood before you and pleaded with you to take urgent action to begin to reform our city's restrictive exclusionary zoning ordinances in light of several recent rejections for new housing around the Pittsburgh region. Since then, City Council has begun the process of authorizing the citywide comprehensive plan and has taken aim at some low-hanging zoning reform, such as removing parking minimums for home-based childcare facilities. While this is a good start, it is not enough. Today, Councilwoman Bobby Wilson is proposing Ordinance 59 to make it easier to build affordable attached housing in neighborhoods zoned for residential, single-family detached homes, either by right on narrow lots or by administrative exception on larger lots. As currently written, the zoning codes require variances from the zoning board of adjustment to build attached housing in R1D zones, which at best delays homes from being built, but at worst sends plans for new housing back to the drawing board at great cost to developers and supporters. We at Pro Housing Pittsburgh fully support Councilman Wilson's proposed legislation, and we especially applaud the effort to fix this issue citywide. Rather than making special exemptions to the zoning code and maps just for fine view, simple changes like this can really make a big difference in the long run. We at Pro Housing Pittsburgh urge all of you on City Council to pass this legislation as soon as possible. That being said, this legislation will not be enough to make housing abundant or affordable for everyone. We need more reforms, and we need them well before the comprehensive plan will be completed. We urge you all to consider bringing forward proposed legislation to remove parking minimums from the zoning code, to reform setback requirements, lot coverage mandates, and minimum lot sizes, to legalize corner stores and other low-impact small businesses, and to upzone areas around Pittsburgh regional transit infrastructure. We very much look forward to coming back before you soon to speak in support of any of these additional legislative changes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Hoover, Amritsar, India, Linguistic Society of America and the Modern Language Association. I became a member in the early 2000s. Global Intelligence Society, candidate for president 2024, 24/7. I can be reached at cgsii.rlm globalintelligence@gmail.com. I seek optimal information and intelligence from the four world regions, from nations worldwide on any issue. A concern of council is to have a great team to do work for the city, as Ms. Warwick, District 5, stressed in her comments, a January 2024 African Hauza, is Nigerian singer Tiwa Savage, song example, Ma Lo, Warwickian Maya Caillou Jindi, for a global meaning worldwide Dolchi Justice BFF team, I say E. Asian Nihongo, our Japanese J-popper Keikazaka, now Su Kurozaka 46, Nai Noburu, hi, Evoki Waon, Awariu Oh, Sariri, enough for global local Seiji, Shojoninja team, hi. European Deutsch, does East to West Unified German Sanger, Nina Hagen, Du hast Farbfilm vergessen, hat groß, naheart genug für Welt, City geschleckt, Gerichtlichkeit, Iberfraut team, ja. And from Español, South Northwestern, Latin America, es buenen Kuba, cantante feminina Gloria Estefan, des da la oscuridad, shengona, tempestuoso, enough for mundo ciudad, Justicia General Muher Maravilla team, si. Ms. Warwick used the term, and I quote, badass team, eight January 2024, in a city council meeting. I view this as SPAM code. She say X, and she also means Y. And many boys don't get it. It's a superposition. He wants X or Y, man code. And I view this as a decoherence vector. I offer one reference, The Atlantic, 22 November 2015, how badass became a feminist rallying cry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Armin Sami.
Hi, my name is Armin Sami. I live on Butler at 46th in Lawrenceville. I'm here to support Bobby Wilson's, Councilman Wilson's bill that eight of you are supporting. I think that's great. We were here in November asking for changes to the zoning code. This is a small step, but I think it's wonderful. I live in a attached home. I didn't know what an attached home was before I moved in. I thought it was a standalone. And so I moved in and was kind of scared that my neighbors would hear everything we're doing. So I actually went to my neighbor's house. It's a row house in Lawrenceville, because they were selling their house at the same time. And I played loud music from a Chromecast in my house and went next door to hear how annoying it was. And it wasn't annoying at all. You couldn't hear the music coming through the walls. So detached, attached family homes are great. They're for everybody. And I think it's wonderful that we're making it easier to build more housing. And I don't think, I don't see any downsides in my neighborhood. We've got apartments across the street. We've got standalone detached houses. We've got attached housing. And everybody gets along great. And I think more of this throughout Pittsburgh is a wonderful thing. So thank you, council, for taking action. And I look forward to seeing the next steps on zoning reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. All moms matter. I honor my husband, who was a true City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School Building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of human feces and hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of this school except to be torn down and become a green space. Declaration of Rights in the Pennsylvania Constitution, Section 2, Political Powers. All power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of those ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasible right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such manner as they may think proper. We have tried for over two years now to have the Bon Air School Building torn down and turned into a green space. But self-proclaimed friends of the mayor want to develop it. City employees are encouraging people to develop and buy the school. The school board would rather spend multiple times the price of the building to keep it instead of cut their losses. We have been harmed by the school closure and the detrimental building. Is the resistance to giving the building to the city for a dollar related to desired kickbacks? The mathematics of holding onto the building makes zero sense. Can we assume that the lack of logic and math... Can we assume that the lack of logic and math school skills is due to public education? Or is there a lining of pockets involved? Where is this guidance? This is from my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire grounds. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder memorial green space is.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Paddy.
Good morning, council. My name is Mark Paddy, and I've been a resident of Lawrenceville for over eight years now. And I've managed to buy my own house in the city, but it's been frustrating to see many of my friends struggle to obtain similar homes of their own. And I thought of them when I saw the affordable apartments in Fineview get shut down last year. And it was frustrating because it seemed like such an absolute slam dunk of an opportunity to bring permanently affordable housing to eight Pittsburgh families, and it was all undone over a prohibition against housing types that are already present in Fineview. So I'm thrilled to see Councilman Bobby Wilson introduce ordinance number 59 today. I want to thank him for bringing this bill forward, and I want to thank council for their near unanimous support of the bill. Getting it passed is going to allow City of Bridges to do what it does best and get these homes put up. Long term, it's going to remove a barrier to more housing construction by permitting or, excuse me, by preventing developers from having to seek more costly and cumbersome variances for future projects. I understand that the scale of the housing supply crunch is deep, and that this ordinance on its own certainly won't be enough to fix the crisis of inflated rent and displacement. And even still, I think it represents a positive fix to a code that clearly isn't working for the benefit of all Pittsburghers. I hope council moves to pass this bill as soon as possible so our land trust can deliver the housing at Fineview and our city so desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Neil Desai.
Hi all. My name is Neil. I'm an eighth district resident, first time speaking here. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Wilson for introducing the change to zoning code for attached homes. And I was going to urge the rest of council to support, but based on what I heard from the other speakers, it sounds like a lot of you already do, which makes me very happy. Secondly, I want to urge the council to take this as an inspiration to make other common sense zoning changes now instead of waiting years to slowly study and rewrite the whole code. I think some things like getting rid of mandatory parking minimums or removing height restrictions in transit-friendly areas have already been well studied in other cities. They work. They promote the building of new housing. They help address the housing shortage and the unaffordability crisis. And we need these kind of common sense zoning changes, not just for single-family homes, but for multifamily housing. I actually just saw an article written a couple of days ago about Cincinnati and how they saw rent growth stabilize for the first time in a long time because they brought 5,000 new apartment units online in the last two years, and they got thousands more that are going to come online in 2024. So I think we as a city need to decide if we want to take a page from Cincinnati or if we want to continue taking a page from the book of, you know, places like the Bay Area where anti-housing policies and single-family zoning have ended up creating the most unaffordable housing situation in the entire country. So once again, I just want to urge the council, let's make common sense zoning changes now. And let's please address the anti-housing policies that the city has enacted for a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melvin Walls.
Good morning. I'm glad to have the opportunity to address the council today. My name is Melvin Walls, and I live in Squirrel Hill. I'm here today to express my support for ordinance number 59. This ordinance is important because overly restrictive zoning rules are a huge obstacle between us and the housing units we need to keep our rents and our mortgage payments from devouring our budgets. It is disappointing to see people continually stubbing their toes, excuse me, on these rules when trying to build places for people to live. Allowing more attached homes by right and streamlining paths to approval is a great first step away from this frustrating status quo. Across the country, we are seeing the heartbreaking effects of demand for housing that continues to outpace supply. We're beginning to see those effects in Pittsburgh. If we refuse to act, more of our neighbors and more newcomers will be forced to leave, sorry, will be forced to move further and further away from town as rents continue to climb, draining our city of its most valuable asset, its people. We have an opportunity to help Pittsburgh take an important step towards building more homes and avoiding this fate. I strongly urge you to pass ordinance 59 and more like it. Thank you all for your time.
Our next speaker is John Howe Billings Jr.
My name is Jack Billings. I live in Squirrel Hill in Councilperson Strassberger's district. I'm strongly in favor of Councilperson Bobby Wilson's bill and thank the council for their near unanimous support of the bill. Pittsburgh has a housing crisis. We have too few homes where people want to live. This shortage, this constraint on supply drives up rents. We've seen rents increase even as the population of the city has fallen because the supply of housing has remained fixed while the size of households has shrunk. The households least able to afford housing are thus left without, either driven into homelessness or forced to move out of the city. Like a game of musical chairs, where removing a chair means that someone will not get to sit down. If you want everyone to have a seat, you must add more chairs. If you want everyone to have a home, you must build more homes. This shortage of homes is caused by policies that restrict the building of housing in the city. The last several decades have seen the introduction of zoning restrictions that prevent building the type of housing that make up most of our housing stock. Restrictions such as minimum lot sizes, parking minimums, setbacks, height restrictions, limits on units per lot, and floor area ratio limits. We see good housing projects repeatedly blocked and delayed. Most recently, when some simple row houses were denied in Fineview on a street where row houses had long existed simply because of ill-designed zoning restrictions. Councilman Wilson's bill helps address this specific issue. It is a necessary first step, and I strongly support it, but it does not go far enough. Existing, we need to reform zoning and look to the existing economic literature to encourage more housing growth. From Asquith Maston Reed's 2023 paper in the Review of Economics and Statistics, Local Effects of Large New Apartment Buildings in Low-Income Areas. New construction, new homes lowers nearby rents. Every building denied or delayed raises nearby median rents by $100 to $159 per month. From Colburn Outern's 2022 book, Homelessness is a Housing Problem. We know an increase in rent drives people into homelessness. Homelessness is not correlated with poverty rates or drug use rates in cities, but with those cities' rents. They find a $500 rise in median rent increase increases homelessness by two people per thousand. At last year's Point in Time Survey, January 24, 2023, 913 people were homeless in Allegheny County. As you braved the cold this Thursday, remember, another point in time survey is being done then. Think of the nearly 1,000 homeless people in Allegheny County, and remember that every housing unit blocked means they or others like them remain homeless, a symptom of the greater malaise of insufficient housing supply. One low, one easy low-hanging fruit of a policy is to reintroduce citywide land taxes instead of property taxes. Pittsburgh had such a tax system from 1913 to 2001. From Professor Zhao Yang's 2014 paper, yep, out of time. In the final sentence, every home delayed, every home not built, means a family without a home in Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Morgan Shaw.
Hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Morgan Shaw. I live in Shadyside. I am here today to speak in support of Councilperson Bobby Wilson's ordinance 59 to amend the zoning code to allow attached housing by right. One of the things that makes Pittsburgh neighborhoods feel the way they do is the already existing urban design. When I learned about the Fineview project being shut down because the zoning code did not allow them to build what amounts to a simple row house, I was confused, but I wasn't surprised. Our zoning code is far too restrictive, not for reasons of preserving neighborhood character or anything like that, but to preserve a racist, inequitable, and immoral housing system. I am heartened to see Councilperson Wilson introducing real concrete changes to the code. For too long, Pittsburgh City Council has relied on spot changes to the zoning code to accommodate specific projects. I see this bill as a great first step of hopefully many to make building and living in Pittsburgh better and more affordable in the future. We need abundant housing of all types to help combat this trap of scarcity we've created. This bill is a great example of allowing building a diversity of types of housing by right to meet the diversity of needs that people in Pittsburgh have. Sure, not all people want to live in a detached house, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have the option and that we shouldn't replace and renew old housing stock with things that we know work, like row houses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Harathen.
Good morning, everybody. Hello again. My name is John Hanrehan. I live in Fineview in Council District 1. And I'm sorry to say I have a history lesson for all of you today. So 34 years ago, the Fineview Citizens Council was in a bind. Their proposal to build 12 new subsidized homes had gotten the approvals it needed from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, but then opponents of the project appealed to court, and the sticking point then was lot sizes. The zoning code in 1991 mandated that new single-family homes be built on prohibitively large lots. And Fineview's lots were too small. And then in 1991, the city council, this city council, passed a very modest reform, an administrator exception to the lot size minimums for most single-family homes to match neighborhood contexts. This administrator exception applied citywide, and it allowed the Fineview Citizens Council in 1991 to break ground on those homes. And there's a story, perhaps as apocryphal, of one of our neighborhood leaders at the time, Pat Buck, walking around the city and a mayor, and I forget which mayor it was, running up to her to thank her for her leadership in getting this done and getting this citywide reform. And I'm excited because history is rhyming today. The Fineview Citizens Council has again been working for years with the City of Bridges Community Land Trust to develop eight new permanently affordable homes on Lankar Street. Our plan is for six of those homes to be in three attached pairs. In other words, we want some of the homes to touch each other. Yet, in a neighborhood where nearly 100 historic single-family homes do touch each other, our zoning code does not allow new homes that are attached like that. Last year, we got the variances we needed from the zoning board, and then a couple of very capable neighbors brought the decision to court, and a judge sided with them. And once again, the Fineview Citizens Council was in a bind. But today, the Pittsburgh City Council recognizes that our zoning code is still sneakily suburbanizing our city and delaying new homes that our neighborhoods are starved for. Today, Councilmember Wilson will introduce a very modest reform. If you own a narrow lot in an area zoned for single-family detached, you can build detached as of right. And if you own a wider lot, you can request one of those administrator exceptions. These exceptions will apply citywide, and they will let us move forward on these new homes in Fineview. So thank you for allowing history to rhyme like this so beautifully.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vlad Kaplan.
Hello, I'm Vlad Kaplan. I'm in East Liberty, which is District 9. And congratulations to Kaharing Mosley, our new representative. We're excited to have you. I'm here to support Councilman Wilson's ordinance as well, which will make attached, single-family homes easier to build. Since attached homes are generally smaller, this change will likely bring more affordable homes to market. We need more homes of all kinds in Pittsburgh, but our zoning code is getting in the way. This proposal will allow for a bit more density in our least dense and most restrictive residential zoning district. I hope this proposed legislation is just a taste of things to come in reforming our antiquated zoning code. And I hope this is the city council to make it all happen. Let's get rid of exclusionary zoning, allow for by-right construction of ADUs, and make it as easy as possible to build seriously dense housing along our transit corridors. Go Pittsburgh, go Pens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lucas Godchalk.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Lucas Godchalk, and I'm a resident of Island Park. I'm speaking today in support of Councilman Wilson's ordinance to amend the zoning code to expand access to attached housing in the city. According to government estimates, Pittsburgh is currently in desperate need of new affordable housing, more than 8,000 units for those who earn the least in our city. Building new affordable housing is difficult under the best of circumstances, which is why, in particular, the Fineview Housing Project, brought by the City of Bridges and the Fineview Citizens Council, is such admirable work. The rejection of the project in port was a blow, not just for the attack on a single good project. When projects like the one in Fineview are rejected, it sends a broader message that our city is not interested in prioritizing housing when it is needed most. But the cost of housing is forcing thousands of low-income renters out of the city. We cannot allow archaic zoning regulation that attempts to force the suburbs on our city and ruins its affordability. I believe that Councilmember Wilson's legislation represents a valuable step in helping to gradually remove these barriers, making Pittsburgh a thriving city that everyone can afford to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. And Neil Desai. Next is Neil Desai. Oh, he did? Okay. So that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Mr. Wilson, I just, I just added some support to you. If buildings can't be touching each other.
Name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm running it from Beachview. If buildings can't be touching each other, aren't stacked vertical buildings touching each other? That's all I can say. URA buildings and a lot of places that are for sale are not shoveling. For the past couple of days, I've had to go down the center of the trolley tracks, not to the side, not next to. And there's little blocked-off things on the trolley islands. I can't go through those either. So, yeah. Anyway, the following is his fault on his phone over there next to the TV screen, the nice cute officer. Council Sharks, do-do, do-do, do-do. Mayor Shark, do-do, do-do, do-do. Everyone here, do-do, do-do, do-do. We need music. New York, New York, do-do, do-do, do-do. Seattle, Washington, do-do, do-do, do-do. Miami, do-do, do-do, do-do. Austin, Texas. These are towns that have the top best music in the streets, do-do, do-do, do-do. Nashville, Tennessee, do-do, do-do, do-do. New Mexico, do-do, do-do, do. Street sound speakers, do-do, do-do, do-do. We can do it, do-do, do-do, do-do. The music at City Council building, do-do, do-do, do-do. Not too good. New Zealand replaced sirens, do-do, 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 with Dionne Warwick, do-do, do-do, do-do. Beachview, Las Palmas, do-do, do-do, do-do. Music in the streets. Get Kappa involved, do-do, do-do. Get the whole Heinz, Burl, all the music places. Mosley, do-do, do-do, do-do. Get involved. It's free air, do-do, do-do, do-do. Music everywhere, do-do, do-do, do-do. Stand in Starbucks, tap, 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 move the hips. It works. Bring music to the streets in Pittsburgh. The end. It's his fault. He wouldn't let me play music, so I had to sing.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Jake Poole. Previous name, Joel Levante Jakob, from Eastern Europe originally, in 1996. I'm here to speak because I've been passed around in Pittsburgh for various forced labor sites. University of Pittsburgh sites, Carnegie Mellon sites, PNC Bank sites, Giant Eagle sites. So you'd think that forced labor happens like underneath the bridge someplace, but now it doesn't. Happens at University of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Mellon, PNC Bank, Giant Eagle, all the foundations of this Pittsburgh. In the 90s, I was in a facility in Eastern Europe. In the nineties, I was in a facility in Eastern Europe with hundreds to thousands of children, without families, without parents for years. We were taught languages, given names, and destinations, you know, the Pittsburgh area. Because the Heinz Foundation in Pittsburgh and other organizations were operating there. And there were facilities where I was in with hundreds to thousands of children. And they changed records, did things, and brought us here. And we're all over here. I was first brought to Ligonier, and then to University of Pittsburgh. I have PhDs and all sorts of things, passed around, paraded around. I have no family, no friends. I'm alone, isolated, medical issues, no finances for nothing, I'm barely surviving. Passed around from one forced labor site to the next. Because Pittsburgh has thousands of us child-trafficked here and literally prepared on a child farm in Eastern Europe to be brought here for slavery and exploitation. For a year, I worked at PNC Bank in the Shady Side area on Squirrel Hill, customer-facing positions, and German citizens, Hungarian citizens, Slovak citizens, Polish citizens who are students here, who are here for UPMC temporary work. They would come to me, and I would help them. And I would tell them I was child-trafficked here from Eastern Europe. I'm alone, isolated, and being hurt. And I'm put here to tell you this. And I'm not alone. Pittsburgh is a child slave trading place. There are thousands, in the last thirty years this has been going on, I don't even know how many of, how many of me have sped around, ten thousand, twenty thousand in Allegheny County, Westmoreland County, hidden places, can't talk, no voices, and being exploited for less than minimum wage with zero human contact and kept like that in plain sight, like Giant Eagle, University of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Mellon, PNC Bank, and all the various places I was, I'm approached, everything, I was approached not that long ago for forced labor site. Because people tracked me down, they have like, my name's on a list. They find me in public places where I know I'm going to be, and they say, hey, I know you're unemployed. I have this forced labor site I can give you very little money for, you can come work for me. I know you're isolated, you're kept with zero human contact, you need a job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alison Keating. I live in Manchester, which, just for the record, is an R1A district, but I live in a detached house, go figure. I am really excited, I know folks are excited about the zoning change, I am really excited about the reintroduction of the bill for the comprehensive plan. That is what we need. I, I'm, I've been in Pittsburgh for, I guess, three mayors now who have tried to do a comprehensive plan, and, and it is very much needed. That, that, that is, that is what prevents us from not having these, these grand discussions with all of our folks and all of our communities is, is what prevents us from making these changes faster and, and, and more proactively instead of being so reactive. So I, I am really stoked about that. And then, and then there's the, you know, I know the city applied for the, for the, for the pro-housing grant from, from the, from the federal government and, you know, to, to, to take a look at the zoning code more broadly and how it is shaping the city going forward, and that is also something to be incredibly excited about. And, but yes, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy that, you know, Councilman Wilson, you know, took this initiative to, to, to address this, this site in Fineview and, and to, you know, just address it everywhere. And, yeah, I keep going, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? If not, we will move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Next is Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next is Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President, I've lost my agenda on my screen here. Do I have new papers?
You have one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Forty-Six, Resolution Amending Resolution Six Eighty-One of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended agreement with the B Three Solutions, Inc., for the continued provision of software maintenance and support services for critical applications and transition guidance by increasing the approved amount by two hundred thousand dollars and extending the contract for one year until December thirty-first, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four. The amended total cost not to exceed of the contract will now be two million one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars over a period not to exceed seven years.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number Forty-Seven, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for One Oh Seven and One Oh Nine Nat Chas Street at no cost to the city.
Next is Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number Sixty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Six Eighty-Three of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, titled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Dicks Sporting Goods Foundation for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of Ninety Thousand Dollars to Support Youth Sports Programming in Each Council District to Add the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation as a Signatory on Grant Awards."
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Forty-Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Jeffrey Curtis and His Attorney Howard F. Murphy, Esquire, for a Single Payment in Two Thousand and Twenty-Four with an Amount Not to Exceed Seventeen Thousand Five Hundred Dollars payable over one year in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. And Bill Number Forty-Nine, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Judith Hulick and Her Attorney Andrew Sisak, Esquire, for a Single Payment in Two Thousand and Twenty-Four in an Amount Not to Exceed Ten Thousand Dollars payable over one year in settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Fifty, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account Statewide to Provide Funding for the Smallman Complete Street Project. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of Nine Hundred Ninety-Nine Thousand Nine Hundred Ninety-Nine Dollars and Thirteen Cent for this stated purpose.
And Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Fifty-One, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Site Under Title Eleven of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Frick Park located at Two Thousand and Five Beechwood Boulevard in the Swisshelm Park, Squirrel Hill South, Regent Square, Point Breeze Neighborhoods in the Fourteenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city. Bill Fifty-Four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contracts with HR and A Advisors in Urban American City for the Purpose of Assisting in the Development of a Citywide Comprehensive Plan, Cost Not to Exceed Three Million Two Hundred Fifty-Five Thousand Dollars Over Two Years. And Bill Fifty-Five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Contract with Common Cost Consulting in Saseki for the Purpose of Developing a Citywide Engagement Strategy to Support the Citywide Comprehensive Plan Process, Cost Not to Exceed Two Million Six Hundred Forty-five Thousand Dollars Over Two Years. And Bill Fifty-Nine, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning Code Article Five, Use Regulations, Chapter Nine Eleven, Primary Uses as Section Nine Eleven Point O Two, Use Table in Chapter Nine Eleven Point O Four Point A Point Six Nine, Use Standards to Permit Single Unit Attached Residential Uses in Residential Single Unit Detached Districts Subject to Certain Standards.
Thank you. And for myself, if you would first read Bill Fifty-Three.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number Fifty-Three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of Two Thousand and Nineteen, Effective January One, Two Thousand and Twenty, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and a Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Pittsburgh Community Services Safety by Fifteen Thousand Dollars and Increasing Pittsburgh Community Services Hunger by Fifteen Thousand Dollars in Authorized Subsequent Agreement."
Thank you. And Bill Fifty-Two.
And Bill Number Fifty-Two, Communication from Drake, from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Requests on Behalf of the Department of Public Works for Robert Sap, Kelly Lewis, the Mayor's Office for Michelle King, and the Department of City Planning for Flor Marion per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June Two Thousand and Eighteen.
Thank you. We need a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Is there any unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Forty-Two, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for January Seventeenth, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account Statewide to Provide Funding for the Purchase of Vehicles for the Pittsburgh Park Rangers. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of Ninety Thousand Dollars for this stated purpose. And Bill Number Sixteen, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh City Controller to Perform an Audit of Code Violations That Escalate to Magisterial District Court from Point of Origin to Resolution pursuant to the Powers outlined in the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you. You have heard the readings and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Will, or Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. Next is Councilman Wilson presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Forty-Three, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for January Seventeenth, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Eleven, Resolution Amending Resolution Six Fourteen of Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with HR and A Advisors for the Purpose of Assisting in the Development of a Strategic Plan for the Department of City Planning at a Cost Not to Exceed One Hundred Nine Thousand Dollars Over One Year." Bill Number Twelve, Resolution Amending Resolution Seven Sixty-Six of Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, entitled, "Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Seventy-Two of Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, Effective January One, Two Thousand and Seventeen, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Seventeen Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Lynn Williams' Hive Rise by Two Thousand Five Hundred Dollars and St. Ambrose Manor by One Thousand Two Hundred Ninety-Nine Dollars and Thirty-Five Cent and Increasing Pittsburgh Higher Ground Foundation, Inc. by Three Thousand Seven Hundred Ninety-Nine Dollars and Thirty-Five Cent in Authorized Subsequent Agreements by Adding the Information for the Pittsburgh Higher Ground Foundation, Inc. to Section One and by Changing the JDE Job Number in Section Two."
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Aye.
President. Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received illegally required numbers of votes, and is fast, passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Forty-Four, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for January Seventeenth, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Eighteen, Resolution, Amending Resolution One Fifty-Six of Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, which provided for the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Root Smart Technologies, Inc., which provides trash and recycling routing optimization for the purchase and implementation of navigation software that will provide turn-by-turn directions to environmental service drivers by extending the term through December thirty-first, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six, and by increasing the total amount by Twenty Four Thousand Six Hundred and Eighty Dollars for a total not to exceed amount of One Hundred Seventy Four Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty Dollars.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, vote aye, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number Forty-Five, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for January Seventeenth, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number Six, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for Fifty Two Oh Three Columbo Street at no cost to the city. Bill Number Seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a permanent easement with the Pennsylvania American Water Company for the Installation, Maintenance, Repair, Operation, and Removal of a Water Line on City-Owned Property. And Bill Number Nine, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed Twelve Million Six Hundred Twenty Two Thousand Six Hundred and Forty-two Dollars to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment and Accessories, Equipment Support Infrastructure, and Professional Services for Use by City of Pittsburgh Departments.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Aye.
President. Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. We have one meeting announcement. Council Standing Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, January twenty-fourth at ten AM. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty one thirty-eight. Speaker registration closes at nine AM. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Yeah, I just want to real quickly say what, thank our DPW and say what a great job they did in this past snow removal. A lot of the crews, our division, Fifth Division always does great, but I didn't, I didn't hear a lot of complaints across the city of Pittsburgh, so just want to thank them.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So moved. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.